Well, Mayor and Commissioners, this is our development update, summarizing the great work that was done in 2024, highlighting the pipeline and the work underway for '25 and '26. We're going to talk about our community economic development projects, as well as all of the great housing development being driven by the Dayton Recovery Plans and the ARPA funding. And just as a little teaser, and not to take too much thunder away from our team, you know, for 2024, in completed projects, we have over $335 million of private investment that has been leveraged or driven by $27 million of various public investments. So that is an incredible feat of investment going on across our city. And in 2025, that private investment number is almost reaching $600 million in '25-'26. So excited about the opportunities to continue to attract investment in the city, to leverage our resources and keep building on our asset development strategies and the Dayton Recovery Plan in the City of Dayton. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Morris and Mr. Kroger and Ms. Geis for their presentation.
Good afternoon, Ministers, Mayor, City Managers, City Managers. As City Manager alluded to, this is our development update, which gives an overview of what we've completed in 2024 and gives a highlight of what we expect to have underway in '25 and '26. So as you know, we're focusing on at least the last 12 months of activity, and our work reflects those adopted plans throughout the city. With a key focus on partnerships and driving more dollars in investments into the neighborhoods. And again, city dollars are leveraged to, are used to leverage private and other public funding. So we'll begin with our West Dayton geography. In 2024, we completed a variety of projects which totaled almost $40 million in investment. A great neighborhood project was the Wright Dunbar cigar bar. And the $650,000 in public and private investment, with 150 coming from the West Dayton Development Trust Fund. Quick Trip was a $9 million private investment, and that is a convenience store over on L C Moses. It was, it helped to create 63 new full-time equivalent positions, and they're always full when I go there. So it has been a success in the community and the neighborhood. Tony will talk further about Habitat for Humanity and their commitment to Edgemont, but that first home was completed in partnership with Habitat for Humanity, as well as the University of Dayton. So we wanted to make sure we highlighted that in terms of our completed projects. Moke Products sits quietly on Wolf Creek, continuing to do investment. They completed a $15 million addition here in the city. Private investment created 12 jobs and retained 72. They're anticipating also doing something in '27. So they continue to sit quietly there on the Northwest Connector and just continue to grow. As you all know, exciting project there on Gettysburg is the Homeful Healthy Living Campus. That was $16 million. This is the Phase One. The city committed $723,000 through Community Development Block Grant, and it's been a great event, a great addition to the community, with Kettering having their position there, a position there in addition to the grocery store and Zix Family Pharmacy, which is a locally owned pharmacy that's also minority owned. So '25-'26 planned investments. One of a very exciting project is Dayton Children's West Side Urgent Care. Dayton Children's, this will be the first urgent care within the city limits, and so we're excited that Dayton Children's has agreed to commit $10 million in private investment, and it will be a full-service urgent care, including x-rays and other type of medical opportunities for children. So we are excited about that, and they are actually under construction even as we speak. The Boys and Girls Club of Greater Dayton is underway in fundraising for a $25 million construction of a new facility. They will be demolishing the current facility and doing a new state-of-the-art facility, which will help them do a lot more outreach in the community in addition to developing a teen workforce development and training center. So it's something that really is going to drive in an opportunity for teens to become work-ready and career-ready. DuPont is again on Nicholas Road, another one of those quiet giants that completed 19 or will be doing $19 million in private investment there on Nicholas Road. Five FTEs will be created and 82 will be retained. One of the great things about DuPont is our team has been doing an amazing job working with them and building services and including ensuring that permits are done, that we're having those pre-development meetings to help tee them up for this investment. Germantown Crossing, again, a great project, housing project. The first phase of the De Soto Bass rebuild, $16 million of public-private investment. $2.5 million in home dollars went to support this project, and it will bring online 50 units of affordable housing. And then lastly, the Dayton Police Department there at the Wright Factory. They're underway. The foundations are being poured, $9.2 million in ARPA funding, and that's for the new construction of the West Pod in addition to other site improvements, including roadways and beautification opportunities there at Wright Factory. Our next community is North Central. 2024 saw $80.45 million worth of investment in this community. Five Oaks Saw through ARPA, Conscious Connected, a pocket park in Five Oaks. It's really a nice park, and they cleaned up a corner, really did a lot in terms of boosting the community and having a place for them just to sit and recreate. Pathways Housing Project was a project that happened in Fairview, $600,000 in private investment. We worked along with Citywide, Phoenix Next, and County Corp to construct three houses that provided homeownership opportunities for low-moderity income residents. So we were able, through this project, to actually get people into homeownership positions who may not ordinarily have had that opportunity. Salem Avenue Rebuild, Public Works continued to do a great job in building, rebuilding Salem Avenue. 2024 saw the completions of Phases Three and Four, which yielded $9.8 million in public infrastructure investment. And then there was also some investment done at Princeton Recreation Center. So we wanted to make sure we highlighted that. ARPA Ken continues to come in and be a key in bringing down some of the blighted housing in addition to fire piles, particularly in this community, which had an overabundance of them. And then lastly, we talk about Grand Place Senior Housing, but there's other housing projects that happened in North Central that was completed. $69.1 million of public-private investment happened to support senior affordable housing in this community. The city provided $4 million, that yielded 427 renovated units of affordable housing for seniors in this community. So we have to thank our partners in GDPM, National Church Residents, and other, Bible Group and others, in helping us yield this type of investment in North Central and support our seniors. Those projects planned for '25-'26. Tony's favorite project, Jack Magnus Capital, who just closed on the property, the Julianne Site property, will plan a $73 million public-private investment, and that is to yield 260 units of new workforce housing. The city provided through the Northwest Redevelopment Fund $2 million. The Commodore Windsor Group is renovating the Commodore Building on the corner of Grand and Grafton. That's an $8 million private investment, which would yield 43 units of market rate housing. Windsor also did a development on Grafton where they did, it didn't happen in '26, but it showed, in '24, but it shows their commitment to this community that brought on 24 units of market rate housing, and they have an 18-month waiting list. The Salem Avenue Rebuild, again, Phase Five, $6.7 million in public funding will be to help start and finish that Phase Five. And then the Longfellow School Project, $40 million of public-private investment, 125 units of new mixed-income senior units, and they continue to do their due diligence and assimilating property and others to get that project underway. Northeast and Old North Dayton. Completed projects in Old North Dayton and Northeast, JPK Manufacturing, a small manufacturing company located on Troy Avenue. Again, quiet company, continues to invest. Last year, they completed a $500,000 project, which yielded 15 new FTEs and retained 32. Libra Industries doing business as Gem City Engineering, $1.5 million project. The city provided $75,000, but that yielded 31 new FTEs and retained 115. Why these are so important is these smaller projects are actually allowing companies to bring on a higher number of FTEs. It does, it's not always the larger projects. It's these small, mid-sized companies that are really doing a lot to employ people in our community. So that's why these are so important. And then, of course, the Year in Nevada. They completed their Hangar Number Two. That saw $46.3 million in public-private investment. The city committed $1,050 new FTEs with a retention of 64. Lot of activity in Northeast in '25-'26. Again, Dayton Phoenix, another one of those companies that continue to grow in the Northeast geography. They have a $4.5 million project planned for '25. The city has committed $200,000, which would yield 115 new FTEs and a retention of 223. Ronald McDonald House, you go by there, is really looking nice. $25.3 million public-private investment with city funding of $500,000. This is great for those families who are, who have, who has to stay in the city because their children are ill. So this is a great project. Dayton Children's continues to grow, $86 million for their Dayton Children's Behavioral Health Center. The Point Housing Project, and Tony will talk about this later as well. $3.1 million of public-private investment. City funding $1.5 million through ARPA, and this will bring online 19 market rate senior family housing units. And then, of course, kinship care housing. This is a great project because it touches multi-generational families. So it is used to help those families who are impacted by child welfare or parents who may have passed away. So this will afford multi-generational families, grandparents raising grandchildren, aunts and uncles, to come in and have affordable housing. This $13 million project received $1.2 million from the city and will bring online 26 affordable housing units. Southeast. So the McCour Bridge Murals, if you've not seen the public art there, they're really cool and really neat. $50,000 has really done a lot to bring that bridge, make it feel welcoming, make it feel like a safe crossing for people in the neighborhood. East End Building Expansion Project, they built right on site. $5.9 million in public-private investment, with $500,000 coming from the city. The Wayne Avenue Widening, of course, we all drive down Wayne Avenue. So just the work that has been done and how that's allowed the flow of traffic on Wayne Avenue. Phase One, $6.3 million of public investment with city and state funding totaling, coming from, with that $6.3 million coming from city and state funding. Miami Valley Child Development Center just opened, just did their grand opening of an $11 million public-private investment. City funding was $1 million to help support the development of our babies. Planned projects for Southeast Dayton, of course, on Main. $110 million in public-private investment, city funding of $7.8 million, and that first phase is anticipating 300 new FTEs. University of Dayton Rexplex Expansion. The University of Dayton is planning an $18 million private investment there on campus to expand their recreational center. The center will also include behavioral health in addition to other cares for students in the community. So this is another expansion project that the City of Dayton continues to grow on site. And then Dutch Brothers Coffee, a $3.9 million investment there on Brown Street. Our partners in planning did a great job in coming up and making this a project that we are ready to welcome, and it'll be another drive-through coffee house there on Brown Street. Lastly, Greater Downtown. Of course, Downtown continues to grow with Hotel Arden opening in January. $26.5 million of public-private investment. City funding of $200,000, and that $200,000 was simply improving the sidewalks. So those things, those small investments really help yield larger public-private investment. Caney Aerospace was a project that came to Dayton through our site selector process. $3.1 million in public-private investment, $25,000 coming from the city. Eight relocated positions from Beaver Creek. 25 new FTEs with a net of 33 new FTEs to the city. The Nate Corporation, again, we were at the groundbreaking. Navajo Company, who expanded here. Again, they came to Dayton through our partnership with the DDC and Site Selector Activities. $7.7 million in public-private investment. The city funding $388,000, 100 relocated FTEs, 151 new FTEs for a net of 251 new jobs to the city. Brandonaw, I mean, an amazing building, $50 million in public-private investment. City funding $50,000 again to improve sidewalks. This is a mixed-use project. Three floors will be office, retail, and 149 market rate housing units. Finally, Delco Office, $85 million of public-private investment. City funding $2.5 million. They are currently leasing their first lease, their first customer or leasing person was company, yielded 88 retained jobs here in the city. The company that moved was going to leave Dayton, and they were able to relocate to Delco Office. Planned projects for Downtown and Greater Downtown, North Arcade. They are finishing up that 93-room hotel, Hilton Garden Hotel. $47 million of public-private investment, first for retail. Dayton Convention Center, Phase One, is wrapping up their $40 million investment. If you haven't been, great facility. City funding $1.5 million, and they are currently working on site development for the hotel development there along Jefferson Avenue. 239 Wayne Avenue, St. Paul Church, again, $22 million in public investment and the creation of another boutique hotel and retail space there in Oregon East. And then lastly, of course, Center City Redevelopment, $110 million of public-private investment, $10 million city funding with the creation of 217 affordable housing units. As Shelley mentioned, $337 million of private investment, $27.6 billion in public investment has yielded a 12-to-1 ratio of our money. Total housing units completed in 2024, 227 affordable, market rate 149. Jobs placed new, 729, and retained 594. A snapshot of overall private and city investment leverage for 2025. $592.6 million in private investment is anticipated. $47.4 million of public investment has been committed with a 13-to-1 ratio. Lastly, just wanted to touch about, a touch on, community organizing and engagement is key to the work that we do in neighborhoods. So we continue to work with our internal and external partners, Citywide, our community groups, to talk about placemaking and branding for our neighborhoods, neighborhood plans development, community environmental justice discussions, strategic corridor improvements, and information sharing and neighborhood event planning. So one of the pictures shows the work that happened along Water Belief with Activate Belmont. In addition to the walking path that is anticipated to connect Louise Troy School with the Boys and Girls Club. And again, just those things that we continue to do in order to help drive and improve our communities and leverage investment in the city. Next will be Tony.
All right. So my component of this presentation is to take a particular focus on housing Dayton Recovery Plan efforts. Knowing that housing is such a focus of this Commission and this administration, we wanted to really load in on those projects that have been brought to you over the last year and a half for your approval. And today, we are excited to talk about how those have advanced over time. So it'll be a suite of projects that I will run through here. And in 2024, this Commission approved over $8 million in ARPA investments towards housing improvement. These are particularly those brought forth by the Planning Division. And it's actually a total of over $15 million in Dayton Recovery Plan funds related to housing that came through the Planning Division. So that's most of the Dayton Recovery Plan housing investment, but it wouldn't include some of the direct external awards that we did, such as those with rebuilding or for Longfellow, for example. But it's the vast majority of our housing investment with Dayton Recovery Plan. That's the $15 million. Those are the ones that came through the Planning Division. Overall, I think it ends up mounting to about $18 million. Those dollars will ultimately help induce or support 757 housing units in the City of Dayton with investment amount total of over $300 million. I will briefly kind of show them on a table and then kind of show a focus slide on the status of each project. But we have, let's see. First, related to new housing, a series of projects that are in various stages of advancement, including those that you know very well in Wolf Creek and Third Street. We talked about the Edgemont Homes with Habitat, prospective new housing at the Point at Kiwi and Valley, home flats, 260 units there. The city's support of the Center City Building, pre-development at the Flats at South Park, along with new housing in Wolf Creek. We'll talk about all of those. And while I have this up here, I do have this column for a project manager, and I want to take a moment to recognize the work of Ellen Sizer on planning staff. She's only been with the city for about a year and a half, and she was immediately responsible for huge housing oversight of projects. And so she has been instrumental in oversight and management of these projects, including these two, which are Vacant Home Rehab with our partners at the Land Bank and Home Improvements of Owner Occupied Housing with our partner, County Corp. And then other housing support approved by this Commission include down payment assistance, as well as the neighborhood amenity of levy improvements, levy enhancements in Wolf Creek to help connect the waterway to the neighborhood. So you may remember all these when they came to you and we talked about it, and it was always exciting to get them approved. But now we get to talk about where they're at and show the pictures. So let's dive right into that. This Commission chose to support the towns at Wright Dunbar to the tune of $980,000. That was all pre-development funds. And since then, I'm sure you're keenly aware of the progress that is made out there. Those are on the bottom left. That's a very current image of the status of the first building on Third Street there. And I was out there just a couple of days ago, and then I happened to see Robie Sims when I was out there. And we got to go up to the top floor of one of the units there, and that overlooks those units that will be actually fronting on French Lane. That's the picture on the right. The first building is the picture on the left. From the back, you can see where the, how the brick on it there. And one of the interesting things of the conversation was that we were both a little bit surprised at the level of interest on those that front on French Lane, because there's a lot of people who say, "I don't know that I want to be directly on Third Street, but I sure love this location." So I thought that was kind of an interesting anecdote. But either way, whether you're on Third Street or French Lane, the interest in this project has been remarkable. Also, when I was up there, Robie says, "Come here, come here, come here. Look out the window here. How exciting is this? You can see our French Lane units coming out of the ground. Look through this behind the street. You can see where GF Bailey is doing their new house with the accessory dwelling unit behind it. And this house to the south of GF Bailey's, that's under massive renovations. It's like they're going crazy out there. We just took down a nuisance structure on Second Street that simply was not going to be saved. And then beyond it all, you can see where we're going to be doing the levy work that we've all agreed is going to be very helpful to connect the neighborhood to the waterway. So it was just a great moment to think about all these different efforts, whether public or private, really creating that synergy that we've talked about from the beginning with the Dayton Recovery Plan. These are the most current renderings for the 19 units at Kiwi and Valley for the Point. This is being done by Civitas Development. This Commission approved the agreement for such in May of 2024. They have actually submitted for a record plan. That'll be at Plan Board in April to get the lots all configured correctly. And they're about ready to submit for building permits. So that will be a heck of an impact. For example, if you're heading northbound on Kiwi Street over the bridge and suddenly see new housing come out of the ground at that, that corner is going to be, I think, tremendously impactful. The aforementioned Center City Building, $2 million in Dayton Recovery Plan funds went toward its ultimate reuse. Veronica mentioned the other city dollars that it complements, and that was approved earlier this year, and remediation is ongoing. Pre-development funds were approved for Flats at South Park. Work will begin on that project in 2025. The city funds will go towards a lot of the pre-development work that has to remediate soils and also to potentially construct sidewalks, which is a very public and private joint effort. Edgemont Homes, which Veronica had mentioned, the first house is complete, and the construction on the second two homes will occur this year. Building plans have been submitted for both of those homes. So that is moving forward in that way. I'm really excited about how these particular homes look. These were, this is part of County Corp's five homes in the Wolf Creek neighborhood. They would, they anticipate to begin construction in 2025. There's kind of one little interesting side note on this one is we did a lot of engagement with the Wolf Creek neighborhood when we were talking about new single-family housing. And it was, across the board, the perspective was, we don't want something that looks like every house that's ever been built in this general vicinity. If you do that, you might as well not even try. So the modern flair, but still at a comparable scale to the rest of the neighborhood, I think is a real win here. And this is just going to be really exciting once these get underway this year. Here's an action shot here. This is the new house on Second Street. It's actually really two units of traditional home fronting on Second Street, and then it would have an accessory dwelling unit behind it, which is, you know, really a second housing unit on the same lot. And it's all accessible. It's not above the garage. It's actually a front word of it as it relates to the lot. So that structure and the accessory dwelling unit are under construction right now. That's with GF Bailey as a partner. Oh, home flats. Indeed, Magnus Capital Partners has bought the site and have closed on it. They anticipate to begin construction this year on the 260 workforce housing units in Five Oaks. We recently did a bit of neighborhood engagement. Magnus came into town, and it was just, you know, a lot of goodwill towards this project. And you guys all know, I've seen the work that Magnus has done up in Grand Rapids. And this is going to be fundamentally impactful for Five Oaks, and I think in a very, very good way. And 260 units is fundamentally impactful for a housing market, even at the scale of an entire city. It's just, it's exciting. We're out there doing with our partners, County Corp, wonderful home improvements, necessary home improvements usually for owner-occupied homes, current on taxes, doing roof replacements and new siding work. So far, work has been completed on approximately 25 homes. Ultimately, about 55 homes will be improved through this program. It's one of those where the demand is probably bottomless. I mean, or you'll never be able to satisfy it probably, but in the end, I think this has been a great demonstration of how the city can support home improvements. Here's some more examples, new roofs, new gutters, just really important things that help add life to our housing stock, right? That's supporting what's already out there. And in every situation, all these homeowners would absolutely love to be able to do this without city support, but as we know, there's tremendous deferred maintenance throughout the city that we need to help support in any way that we can. In the Vacant Home Rehab with our partners at the Land Bank, this will probably be about 12 houses totally saved, essentially taken out of the demolition pipeline, brought back to life. There's a couple in historic districts here, and that will begin this year. The target properties have been selected, and bids have been received and a contract has been selected. So wrapping it all up here, this is the geographic footprint of where all this work has occurred. This doesn't actually show the down payment assistance, but that would be a great layer to have on here. This doesn't actually show the down payment assistance, but that would, that would be a great layer to have on here too. But this shows where we've worked with our partners on the home improvements, which are the green dots, the Vacant Home Rehab are the larger orange dots where the new housing projects are to occur with the support of the Dayton Recovery Plan. And of course, the levy work that will occur along the Wolf Creek. Not necessarily directly Dayton Recovery Plan, but very much affiliated with housing support and making projects feasible. I should mention that in two thousand twenty-four, the West Community Reinvestment Area was approved, which really means that everything to the west of the Great Miami and Stillwater Rivers now is in a community reinvestment area. Where one could get a, a ultimate abatement up to a hundred percent on residential improvements for fifteen years, which is a tremendous tool. That's the extent of what I have, and that makes it the extent of what we all have.
Commissioner, I'm sure we have some questions, nothing else, we have some accolades, thank you so, so much work that you've done and the guidance that you provide. So, Commissioner, Commissioner Schloss?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor, I would definitely second that, the, the amount of work that you all have done is definitely commendable. Thank you all, thank you all for your commitment, this is very exciting news. I do have a couple of questions. So the first, and I apologize, the first question that I wanted to pose, let me see where am I? See, do we have any estimated dates for completion for the number of projects that you listed out? The West Side Urgent Care, I think I have my notes show that I have like a committed completion date, and just for like a number of them, I know some of them are still ongoing, but if you have any, any completion dates, that would be helpful.
I, I know for the urgent care, a lot of those, a lot of the completion dates is based off of supply chain issues, funding, that type of thing. I can tell you though, for the West Dayton Urgent Care, they're already under construction. They're anticipating a ten to twelve month construction time, which is typical of most, of a lot of those projects. So a lot of it is driven, and sometimes we can give a date and it not, and not touch. But I do know for that particular one, they're talking about a ten to twelve month development time.
Okay. Is it possible too, and this is just a recommendation, I think it may be, it may go a long way, or GDP to come, maybe through a work session, whatever have you, to provide us with an update on the status of where we are with the development project that we have on Germantown. Because I still get a number of questions as to like, where are the people from Minnesota Bass? And how, what is the phasing process, if you will, for making sure that those individuals are not displaced? So I think it might be an opportunity for us to do a refresh, if you will, especially since everything has transpired in a number, the units are starting to take shape and form. So just as something to consider.
If I can just provide a small bit, with the demolition, they're doing attrition. So what that means is that when a family leaves, they're not filling the unit, and so that is allowing them to empty a building at a time. There might be some shifting within DeSoto Bass, they did the same thing at Hilltop, so that as whole buildings become vacant, they are eliminating the building. They are not, based on their funding sources, they're not allowed to just displace individuals, they have to relocate. And so it's truly through that attrition where they are allowing units to go vacant and then leaving them vacant so that they can.
I think just providing a little bit more, go ahead.
I'll talk with Ms. Jackson and talk about the possibility of a work session for an update.
Thank you, I appreciate that, thank you, Ms. Guys, for that. So I, so I did see a lot of movement and the demolition has started, and forgive me, I don't have the, the address per se, but it's right next to GMC on St. Luke Avenue. I believe at one point it was slated for senior housing, the, it's right on, you know what I'm saying?
Yes, they're demolishing the old hospital.
Yes, the old hospital, so is it still in the plans for?
They are working on, they're working on their capital stack, so it will probably be another six to eight months before they actually secure their capital stack.
Thank you, but it looks good, that's, yeah, the demolition, so that's great. The other question that I have for Longfella, are we, is there a status? I understand that we have a list here, but I know there's some hiccups, not to go into any details or weeds, but is it in fact moving along?
Yes, it's moving along.
Okay.
And I think the major hiccup, there's a, there's a remedy in plan.
Oh, very good, excellent, that's great to hear.
Are you looking?
Yeah, please.
The one question was the Gray Sanet Drews Property, so that was answered. On the corner of, I think it's, would be the northeast corner of James H. McGee in Germantown, what's the development that's according to that location? Is it?
That's Gerald.
That's Gerald, that's inside for the urgent care.
Yes.
Okay.
We, it's some calls address, so that's why.
And that Germantown's on an angle, so I was trying to, I had to look at the map.
Yes, I did, thank you, thank you, Mayor, thank you, Commissioner. So for County Corp, the Wolf Creek Homes, I believe you said, and I may have this wrong, but you said that there are five units, but on the, it said units in fact are twenty-seven.
Oh, because there's, that's very confusing, there's really two projects in the Wolf Creek neighborhood that involve County Corp. There are the market rate ones on the east side of Broadway, that's the Wolf Creek Five.
Okay.
Then that one where it says twenty-seven is on there, and that was really an external award, but I put it on there because it went through the Planning Division, where we supported their twenty-seven Lytec units, or whatever, the number is twenty-seven, twenty, Lytec units with three hundred thousand. Naturally confusing, because it's two, two Wolf Creek housing projects with County Corp.
Thank you. And are we with the, I know you mentioned in terms of the, the work that's being done with County, County Corp and the home improvement, and you're right, there are not enough dollars. So just a question, are we matching, or are we in conversation with County Corp as well as with the Land Bank? Would the six hundred fifty thousand that we've designated for the Welcome Home Program, are we in conversations with them to make sure that those dollars are being matched and that we're assisting those in fact a part of that, that ask or that list?
Six hundred fifty thousand from issue six?
Yes.
So that went to the Land Bank, right? So that it leveraged their twenty million or whatever in the, in the Welcome Home. So the, the city and Land Bank are working very closely together on, on that funding.
But the question is, that piece, are we making sure that we're in conversation to, to make sure that those dollars are in fact being awarded to some of those homeowners who need the description for home improvement? Because that, that twenty million dollars is for new house, new housing as well as existing, so it's just a question.
So we can provide updates on, I'm sorry, thank you, we can provide some updates on that with regards to the operational detail. Because it's obviously very opportunistic, right? As we come across the opportunities, dependent on, you know, the location, the need, the, what we can drive forward, we're, we'll be driving those forward. But we'll give you some, we'll give you an updated as activity occurs there, so that you understand where, where that's going.
Okay. As a reminder, we have our CDBG competitive process this year, and there was a priority set by the commission that it will go toward housing. So that will leverage both of those programs and help spread the level of income that we can support. So that way they can focus on individuals at or above the eighty percent range, while our CDBG programs support those below.
Thank you, Ms. Guys, thank you, Mr. Schles.
Isn't it true that like all the organizations in the Home Repair Network, they all maintain lists of everybody who applies?
Yeah, we just received that information, Ms. Kewell was here, it was last week, it's going fast. Last question, thank you, Your Honor, thank you to my colleagues. The last question that I have, I know you mentioned about eighteen million, eighteen to twenty million that we've invested in housing in our neighborhoods out of the fifty-five million, so around about that thirty thousand, thirty million, not thirty thousand. But where are we, where are we with that thirty million dollars in terms of that fifty-five million for our neighborhoods? Can we have a breakdown of how we were, how we utilize that thirty million dollars into our neighborhoods from that fifty-five million that we designated to neighborhoods?
That, that, that comes in our, our updates that we do in our financial briefings, your monthly briefings.
I'd just like to see like that breakdown, like, okay, here's the twenty million for housing, and then we have the thirty million that we did for infrastructure, curbs and sidewalks, whatever have you. Okay, thank you, thank you, yes, I'm good, very exciting.
No, I just wanted to, I didn't get to do my accolade, so just, I mean, looking at this map, seeing the housing, the home improvements, Vacant Home Rehab, and letting you do the free, that's substantial work, so thank you.
Commissioner Shaw?
Yeah, it is substantial work, I've walked that corridor recently several times, so it's very impressive. But what's most impressive is this thirteen-to-one ratio leveraged investment, I mean, that's, that's really important, so congratulations, appreciate it.
Yeah, very exciting, I'd like to know the word. This is something that's really good to date because all the work that's happening across the nation. Of course, we know that the, the housing challenge is one of those things that's nationwide, and as we have been in Washington a few, a few times the last couple of months, talking about the aspect of the increase in terms of the costs of housing. Being somewhere within the last fifty years, some seventy percent. And then the amount of dollars for individuals to afford housing has only increased fourteen percent. So see, there's a real big gap, a real big gap, and the aspect of what that is doing, and ladies, I'm not sure we understand that, has, is helping us a lot in terms of addressing those issues. But also the aspect of, as we were in conversations in the D.C., talking about the jobs movement, jobs materials, and so many things that were in the pipeline a few months ago are now being questioned. And especially being challenged right now are the job market issues with individuals being terminated from different jobs. So we'll have to keep our eye on that and see where we are to make sure that nothing interrupts some of what you're doing. Again, you guys keep on doing what you're doing. Okay, thank you so much, appreciate it. So we're early, unless you have something else to present?
I have nothing else.